So, everyone, I'm just going to ask you to introduce yourselves. You get two minutes each. And Democrats, you can decide what order you want to go in. But I think we want town board, then town clerk, then highway. Oh. Fine.
Okay. Ellen, why don't you? It's 10:02. Why don't you kick it off and start the welcome?
Welcome to everyone who has decided to attend. We hope this will be something that helps you make a decision about who you're going to vote for. And thank you, all of the candidates, for taking time out of their time today. We'll be asking questions. We hope that will elucidate some interesting answers. And I think we just want to get going right now. So Greg, would you like to introduce yourself and then the rest of your team?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So first, I'd like to start off thanking civic associations for hosting us. Opportunities like this are just so important to get in front of the public, our neighbors, and talk about what's motivating us. So I'm Greg Duraskey, and I'm running for town council to serve and to strengthen our community and to preserve our way of life. I was born and raised in Matatuck, and my wife Liz and I are raising our daughters in South Old Town, just as we always dreamed. I graduated from college with a degree in philosophy. I helped found, build, and manage a successful brewery business. Currently, I'm the innovations director at Greenport Harbor Brewery. Two years ago, I ran for supervisor and came within 117 votes of restoring leadership to South Old Town. Most of the issues we campaigned on last time are even more urgent today. The absence of vision, planning, and leadership, the lack of transparency and accountability, the missed opportunities. This administration still hasn't implemented the comprehensive plan. They still haven't implemented sensible house-size restrictions. They still haven't taken action on deer and ticks. They still haven't taken action to preserve and improve our water quality. And they still haven't taken action to address the looming threat of climate change. And it's not just this administration. It's our opponents in this race for town council. Mr. Sanino at the Matatuck Laurel Civic Association, when asked about zoning changes related to the comprehensive plan, said, I quote, "I am not well-versed in the comprehensive plan. I'm stumped. I'm going to have to pass." Mr. Williams, when asked about sensible house-size restrictions, rejected them. His solution for traffic was not to drive to Riverhead on the weekends. And when asked about climate change, he took a wait-and-see attitude. I think the area of Orient suggests that a wait-and-see attitude is not enough. We need to take action on these and other issues facing us.
Muting, muting, muting.
Unmute yourself now, Brian.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I'm so pleased to be able to speak to you. I just want to thank Drienne and Ellen and everybody from East Marion and Orient. You are some of the most engaged and most plugged-in voters that we have. And any opportunity to talk about what the issues are and what the issues that are affecting our voters, it's a blessing to me. And my name is Brian Mealy. I'm a candidate for the Dems for South Old Town Council. And I'm blessed to be the most experienced public servant that's in this town council race. As a two-time elected school board member in Matatuck Kutchog and also as a re-elected Eastern Suffolk Bosis member, I know what it takes to make fact-based decision-making, to be a good listener, to listen respectfully, to hear our constituents, and to act. And that's something that we have not had in a long time in South Old Town, is community action for the betterment of South Old. It's not acceptable for the betterment of only a select few or only a select few who have a particular political party. I'm a South Older first, and I want to make sure South Old knows that if I'm elected as your town council, I'm going to fight for everybody. I have a background in diversity. I have a background in equity. And if I'm elected, we can have an historic election with my slate mates, Elizabeth for trustee and Candace for clerk. Candace would be one of the first African-American people to be elected, and I would be one of the first African-American people to be elected to town council. And you, as the voters, have the power to make history. And I'm looking forward to hear what you have to say. I'm so blessed to be a library worker in our community, blessed to be a person that worked in our community at Peconic Landing. I've been a good listener for 12 years. I think I know the heart of the community. Thank you very much.
Next, Democrat. Hello. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so much to the civic association for putting this event together. As Greg said, we are very thrilled to be connecting with the community. So my name is Candace Hall, and I am running for South Old Town Clerk. My large extended family has deep roots in Greenport and South Old Town. We come from humble beginnings with heavy ties to the church. Seven generations of our family have called South Old Town home. My grandparents, Bootsy and Bang, had 13 children, and somehow, some way, they made many feel like an extension of our family. When my grandmother Bootsy, when my grandmother's children were of school age, she went to work at Head Start as a cook, only extending her reach within the community even deeper. I come from a compassionate, community-minded, and service-oriented family. This is my legacy. I bring these values with me into my professional life and career, which gives me all the essential qualities to be the responsive, community-minded, and civically engaged center point of town. Excuse me, sorry. This is also how I can have an impact in town hall. Whether it is providing services to families in my work as a preschool teacher or helping clients choose coverages tailored to their individual needs, client service and satisfaction is what truly motivates me. In my current role as an insurance broker, my job hinges on my ability to navigate complex regulations and guidelines while managing important documents with an attention to detail. My extensive background in administration and client services has allowed me to flourish on a team that currently manages a substantial portfolio with the foremost businesses, companies in the insurance business. The time has long passed to look at ways to introduce new technology and innovations to add efficiencies and update systems and procedures currently in place. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to speaking with you and answering your questions.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dan Goodwin, and I'm seeking the position of superintendent of highways. I just want to say thank you to Orient and East Marion for, you know, putting this event together for us. And this has really been the cornerstone of my campaign, getting out and meeting as many people in the community as possible. My name is Dan Goodwin, and I'm very proud to represent the entire, the entire community of South Old. I'm a lifelong resident of Kutchog, where I currently live with my wife Kristen and my 20-month-old son Hunter. I attended Matatuck High School and graduated from there in 2006. Upon graduation, I attended a rigorous engineering program in Massachusetts where I received a degree in mechanical engineering. When I left for school, I always knew I wanted to return home to the special place here in South Old. Upon returning home, I accepted an entry-level position at a locally headquartered environmental company with a national footprint. Over there, I've learned the value of training and leadership from my time working with and managing teams of hazmat technicians, laborers, equipment operators, and professional drivers. To serve our community, I bring an engineering background and a hands-on expertise in environmental response, industrial maintenance, and infrastructure utility projects up and down the East Coast. My experience in budgeting and utilization will lend themselves in my ability to plan the work and work the plan for the routine maintenance and improvements to the town and infrastructure. Being ready is who I am at my core. A mechanical engineer with an emergency response background, trained to prepare in advance, vet out solutions to the unknown, and adapt to change as it unfolds. During our community's recent approach with Hurricane Henry and the remnants of Hurricane Ida, I took that opportunity to tour the town and do a comprehensive evaluation of the infrastructure of the town. I started in Orient and proceeded to Laurel, noting our strong points and our weaknesses. This community deserves an efficient, responsive, and transparent department to preemptively maintain and ensure the safety of the infrastructure of the town. We need an administration.
Muting, muting. Now the Republicans. Right, Republicans. First.
Do you want me to go first, Anthony? Okay. Thank you very much for hosting East Marion and Orient. I'm Anthony Sanino, and I'm seeking position at South Old Town Council. I've been a resident here in South Old since 2006. I've been raising our four children with my wife Lisa. They've all attended school here. My formal education is actually in construction engineering and architecture. I have a less formal education in viticulture and analogy, which is wine making and the growing of grapes. My family now has grown. My children have shown interest in our, in our passion, which is our vineyards and in our winery operation. I've got two daughters. Our oldest is now working at our winery full-time. Our second daughter is a graduate of Cornell with viticulture and analogy and is currently getting some experience on the West Coast in a large winery facility. Some of my background here, since we moved to Kutchog, I've been a volunteer for several different organizations. I'm currently on the South Old Town Advisory Committee. I've been immediately past president of the Long Island Wine Council. I'm a member of the Long Island Farm Bureau. And since we operate and own also a bed and breakfast here at our home, I was the past, one of the past treasurers of the North Fork Bed and Breakfast Association as well. I feel it's extremely important to be involved in our town. I've had this opportunity, and I plan to implement as much as I can and show that I can be an assistance to our community. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Greg Williams. I'm running for South Old Town Council. I'd like to thank the organizers of this event for giving me the opportunity to join you today. Grew up in Matatuck. At an early age, I realized we had something beautiful here, and I have worked very hard to stay here. I married a young lady from Orient. We're currently raising two kids in Kutchog. I've owned Country Time Cycle, a staple bicycle store in Matatuck, for the last 26 years. In addition to that, I do a lot to serve this community. In addition to volunteering with local charitable organizations, a former Cub Scout leader, Little League coach. And we have many organizations come to the bike shop looking for support in their charitable causes. And we're always happy to pitch in and help. My focus is on quality of life, to ensure that we continue to keep what we have out here, to make sure it stays beautiful, water quality, you know, come up with reasonable house-size issues. And again, mainly quality of life, which is a broad spectrum to cover a bunch of issues. I know the people of South Old Town from living here my entire life. The people of town know me. I'm very easy to talk to, very approachable, and I'm always willing to listen. And I look forward to continue working hard for all of the residents of South Old Town moving forward.
So our next Republican? Who is that?
I could go now. This is Dennis Nancaro. Okay, hi. This is Dennis Nancaro, running for town clerk. Thank you so for putting this together. Much appreciated. Like everybody said, it's great to have everybody show their faces to the public. When I heard that Betty was retiring, we went over my background, which is customer service and community service, and thought it was a very good fit. I've run service departments with upwards of 100 employees. I know all the managerial skills that are needed to do that. My background with customer service is caring for people, caring for the community, caring for everybody that I can to help them through whatever process or whatever they're doing. I've also been involved with a lot of community organizations. I started, I was one of the people that started a homeless shelter years ago that is still to this day, 20-some years later, in existence, helping people get to where they need to go. I'm involved with Alliance Club. I've been in the Kiwanis. I'm involved with the Chambers. I'm very active in the community. My role right now with South Old Town is government liaison officer, which basically, to put that in a nutshell, is I work with all the government departments, all organizations outside, and all other governments to assist the town and assist the community where the needs are and care for the community. I do this through grants, through projects, through forums, through outreach, being liaisons to committees, and all, a lot of outside organizations to basically put my energy and my knowledge into helping people that come in. It's seven days a week, and I'm there for this community. Thank you.
Our next Republican? Who we missed?
Donald Grimm.
Donald Grimm. There you go.
Yes, my name is Donald Grimm, and I'm running for position of superintendent of highways in South Old Town. I moved here roughly 30 years ago, and I started a recycling and an excavation and drainage company and a trucking company. We have tow trucks, and we're on the South Old Town Police Call List, which is a 24/7/365 operation. You're on call, so you have to be ready to go whenever you have a certain amount of time to get to the scene, to remove the cars in a timely fashion, and clear the road. It's usually cars, but once we had a boat, it took a little while to get the boat back on the trail, but we got it done. And I, we also have some snowplow trucks. We snowplow for Suffolk County. I've been a Suffolk County subcontractor for 36 years. And again, you have to be ready. You have to be prepared. When they call you, you have to get to the road they send you through with whatever truck you need and work as hard as you can as long as you can to keep the road open. So I've been doing that for 36 years. I've seen a lot of storms come and go, and know how to be prepared to get it done. I had three girls. They all went through the Matatuck Kutchog School System, great, great school system. My youngest one, Trinty, she's a lieutenant in the Navy. My next one up, Danielle, is a CPA for Unstained Young. And my oldest one, Jennifer, is Macy's corporate headquarters. I'm a member of the Son of a Legion Post 803. I volunteer in the Kutchog Fire Department. I'm a member of Oregon Yacht Club, and I'm also on the South Old Town Tree Committee. I understand maintenance of equipment and how to buy it, where to buy it, how to get the best deals for the town.
Muting, muting, muting. All right. I think that was the last of our introductions. So Drienne, do you want to take over and start asking questions?
Yep. So just so we all know that we've got about an hour. So for questions, my name's Drienne Benner from the Orient Association, president of the Orient Association. We are going to start with town board candidates. We have 10 questions for the town board, and then two questions each for town clerk and highway superintendent. So Ellen and I are going to switch back and forth. We are doing the town board questions in pairs. And we've already discussed that, but I'll repeat it again once we get going. So we'll start. So the first question is, again, town board, and we're talking about issues and priorities. So the first pair is Greg Duraskey and Anthony Sanino. And your question, and Greg will go first, Anthony will follow, then we'll switch the order when we do it again, so that everybody's alternating. The question for you, Greg and Anthony, is what are the most critical issues that South Old Town is facing today? So Greg? Greg Duraskey.
Confusing, huh?
Sorry.
No, it's, it's all good. We're, we're dealing with it in all of these forums. I think the most important issue, and this is kind of an overall thing, is to implement the comprehensive plan. You know, without a plan and without real leadership in South Old Town, I feel like we've been kind of like a rudderless boat, kind of drifting our way towards an inevitable that really doesn't work for the people of South Old Town. So number one is implementing the comprehensive plan. And I think to do that, we need to formulate an implementation committee. I still remember standing in Pokatuck Hall when the town was rolling out the comprehensive plan, and a gentleman got up and pitched this idea, and the crowd seemed to be very receptive to it, but the town was not. So I believe we need to put together an implementation committee to get the plan implemented. One thing I've been thinking about recently is possibly using the stakeholders from back in, back in '09, kind of reconvening them as a component of this implementation committee to get things rolled out. I think number two is we need to update our zoning code to reflect the priorities of the community. I think everyone agrees that our zoning code is outdated. You know, it says that in the comprehensive plan. But if you look at the past 10 years, there's just been a very ad hoc approach to this, and we really need to get ahead of some of the things that are coming down the pike for the community. You know, it seems like the big money is here, the big houses, the big development project, and we really need to get ahead of this. And I think it's, you may hear the GOP kind of say that I'm going to take away people's property rights, but it's really looking at the community and what the priorities are for the community. And some of this will be giving people more rights in their property and looking at really what, what, what matches to the community. Number three is our quality of life here. And I think in here, we have a number of different.
Muting, muting, muting.
Anthony?
Okay, great. So for me, my passion is trying to keep our agriculture heritage in place. I know that currently, our current administration and past administrations have done a great job at preserving land and preserving it from development. For me, I don't think that's enough. I think it's going to come to a time where farmers are going to be weighing out, do I sell to a developer or do I sell my development rights? I think we need to incentivize, incentivize farmers to continue their agricultural operation by not putting hurdles in front of them when restrictions are placed on preserved properties. I think this leads to, as Mr. Duraskey mentioned, quality of life. Quality of life is something that we all talk about. But with quality of life comes lots of different issues that I think keep rolling back to keeping our lands from being overdeveloped. So when we talk about land restriction and size restriction of homes, I think that's also very important. I think our focus should be on a lot of the smaller properties, not a lot of the larger properties. The smaller properties will impact our neighbors, and I think we are behind. We need to focus on probably some of the models that we've already seen on the South Fork and try to implement them. So that's really important. Regarding the comment Mr. Duraskey makes regarding one of our last debates where I refused to answer the question, the question was very specific. They were looking for a zoning code, a particular zoning code that would not, that would affect the comprehensive plan. I've been in attendance to many of the comprehensive plan meetings, which I didn't see Mr. Duraskey at. So I am very familiar with the comprehensive 13 chapters of the plan.
Muting, muting, muting.
Thank you. So for the next pair, the next question, this is for Brian and Greg Williams. So Brian first. What will be your first priorities once you assume office? How do you plan to make a positive impact on the town of South Old? So this is first priorities.
No, thank you, Drienne, for that very important question. And it keeps coming back to it. You can't go in the right direction if you don't have a plan. And the comprehensive plan took a good amount of time to compile, and now it's time to review it and put it into action. And my background as a school board member and as a Bosis member, we hear the facts, we report to the public, we get feedback, and we act. And that's something that's not occurring in the current iteration of the town board. And the people of South Old are crying out for good leadership, and I believe Slate A, the Democratic Party, I believe me as a town council, Greg as a, Greg Duraskey as town council, we're the proper leadership at the right time to move South Old forward. We've had over 20 conversations in our community, and people are asking for leadership. So leadership is one of the first things to do. And I think, I'm sorry, bipartisanship is not a bad word. And if we can balance the board as Democrats, we can force all the important issues that the people of East Marion and Orient know and all the people of South Old know. And I want to make sure when people come to South Old Town that they're respected and heard and listened to. That's my background, and that's what I would do as your next town council person. Thank you.
Hello. My first priority upon becoming a town board member would be to continue to work hard. Four years ago, I ran for trustee. After winning that election, I worked very hard serving the people of the town. I am focused on the environment. I have sold green transportation for my adult life. Seven years ago, I got concerned about water quality when reading in the local papers that the local creek I grew up on was closed for seasonal shell fishing due to high bacteria levels. I got involved. I submitted my resume to the South Old Town Conservation Advisory Council, where I was able to work with some very talented people. And we reviewed trustee projects, and we also put forth ideas and recommendations to both the town board and the board of trustees. Again, my main platform is quality of life. It does cover a very broad spectrum. I want to make sure that over the past few months, I've, I've probably talked to well over 3,000, 4,000 residents and walking around town, and they have shared with me their concerns. And I want to make sure those concerns get addressed and, again, continue to work hard for the people of South Old Town, as I have done for many years. Thank you.
Great. So now we're going to move on to a new topic, which is economic development in South Old. So back to our first pair. Anthony, you'll be up first, followed by Greg Duraskey. What is your position on economic development in the town of South Old, and how do you propose to control it?
It is, it is definitely a concern. I think it's a great question. I think we're being faced with a couple of applications and projects that concern the town tremendously. Scale and scope, we've heard that numerous times. We just had a hearing regarding a hotel in South Old. I believe that, you know, applicants, when applying for a project, will shoot for the stars. I believe that the town needs to work with them. I think they need to negotiate down the scale to balance with the community character in our, in our town. I have a lot of confidence in our zoning board and our planning board. I've been through an extremely large project myself for my winery with proper negotiations. I, you know, my opponent talks about giving up property rights. I did give up property rights when I developed my winery project to mitigate problems that did occur at, at other sites in town. When I gave those rights up, I gave them up for the community so that we wouldn't have issues. I think that working with applicants is very important and holding or guiding. When I, when I get into office, I want to be able to work in conjunction with our departments, our planning boards, and our zoning boards and encourage them to look at our laws, our codes, and properly guide these, these projects. I believe that our town has room for development. I just believe that scale and scope is a key factor, and we should continue to look into it and manage accordingly. When it comes to developing agriculture, where my passion lies, I'm hoping to encourage farmers to sell their development. I'm hoping to encourage farmers to sell their development rights to stay in agriculture, not just for them, but for the future generations, like I've done with my family and my kids are following.
Muting, muting, muting.
Thank you for this important question. You know, I believe the future of South Old Town is on the ballot next month. You know, as we look around, there are a number of big development projects in the works. We hear rumblings about them kind of over the horizons. And the lack of leadership and the lack of effort implementing our comprehensive plan has put us in the position where we don't have the tools to defend ourselves. I think the flip side of this is it also makes it difficult for business owners to carry their projects forward if we don't have updated and modernized code. One of the reasons that we really need to overhaul and modernize our code is there, you know, there's a number of competing definitions in there. Sometimes they outright contradict each other. For example, the word farm stand is mentioned a few different ways in a few different chapters. So I think we need to make clear code so everyone is on the same page. Some of that also, and again, it talks about this in the comprehensive plan, having a more kind of thorough and clear descriptions of what uses are allowed and exactly what zoning districts. And being clear in the specific chapters about what those uses are, not referring people to other chapters, and really being as clear as possible. Clarity in business is important. You know, business owners take calculated risks, but you do need some certainty of outcome. And I believe with our outdated code, it leads to uncertainty. It leads to maybe some contentiousness that doesn't need to be there. I believe that, you know, a majority of the business owners in our community, they're vital members of our community, right? And we need to support them. I think we need to streamline the processes in town hall. One thing I've been very interested in-
Muting, muting, muting.
Great, thank you. Our next question for Greg Williams first, followed by Brian, will be, what suggestions would you make to encourage our youth to stay and work in Southold? How would you resolve, this is the second part of the question, how would you resolve the shortage of workforce currently plaguing the North Fork? So Greg Williams first, what suggestions would you make to encourage our youth to stay and work in Southold? How would you address the workforce issues plaguing us?
It's a great question. There is definitely a shortage of workforce on the North Fork, and that does need to be addressed. One thing that I would like to take on would be affordable housing and look for opportunities, both opportunities that currently exist in the code and also possible changes to the code to expand opportunities for private business to develop more affordable housing in downtown areas, halo areas, possibly more accessory apartments, mixed-use buildings. A lot of these people are already here, and they are living in, you know, parents' basements or with relatives. So to give them an opportunity to really cement their future in Southold by having an affordable option in the town. And I think if we expand a little bit upon the affordable housing, where it makes sense in downtown areas, it would help with the workforce crisis that we're currently facing.
Drienne, that is probably, they're so, you guys are so good. I love, that's just why I love working and listening to the civics, because it really is an education for the community. And as somebody that works with young people and tries to encourage young people through BOSIS and through my work in the library and on the Matituck-Cutchog School Board, I want, I love our young people, and I want to fight to make sure they have a chance to stay in heaven and to be prosperous and to be successful, because we have some great schools that have educated them, and it's not fair that we're having brain drains because we don't have affordable housing. So again, it goes back to what's the plan? What's the plan? And I believe the Democrats are on the case for what's the plan, because I'm willing to admit that I don't have every answer for every question, but I want to make sure I'm going to convene our stakeholders that are the community experts, like the civics, like the civics who have done talks on affordable housing. Affordable housing is critical. And also back to the other previous question about supporting our businesses. We have to have a serious talk with our businesses about pay rate. How can somebody hold on in the North Fork when the cost of living is so high? So there's no easy answer, but the Democrats here and myself, we're ready to get to the bottom of it. We're ready to bring all stakeholders. We're ready not to just press down what the answers are, but I'm willing to say we need to have a serious community talk about our future, and the comprehensive plan should be integral in that. And we have to support all our people, but particularly the young people who are literally the future of Southold. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now back to Greg Duraskey first, followed by Anthony. So his question is about tourism. How can the town continue to encourage tourism without impacting quality of life for the residents?
Thank you, Drienne. This is the sort of quality of life issue that I think we really need to start tackling. And I think, you know, for far too long, we've seen this town government, this administration, attack the business owners for some of the problems that our community is facing without working them, with them as partners to solve these problems. You know, we need to sit down with these business owners and figure out solutions. You know, there's, you know, as we've seen, it's happening in various communities. You know, it happens in East Marion. It's happening in Matituck right now. And I think, you know, this is one of those issues where we need to have a more regional approach. We need to sit down with our neighbors in Riverhead, come up with a solution that works. I think enforcement is another big issue. I know I've heard a lot from the people on Pecanic Bay Boulevard and their concerns with limos and buses down their roads and, you know, people urinating on the sides of the road and a feeling that there's a lack of enforcement. You know, on the codes that we do have and the laws that we do have, they need to be enforced, because those are the tools that we have in our toolbox to address these quality of life issues. And I think we need to look at first enforcing them and then building on them, you know, working with, you know, some of these farms, let's say, working on, you know, parking and ticketing strategies so they can get a certain number of people in and out that maps to our infrastructure. You know, our infrastructure is not built to satisfy the needs of this growing community. Thank you.
This is my turn, correct?
That's right, Anthony.
Just for the listeners, repeat the question again.
Sure. So the question is, how can the town continue to encourage tourism without impacting the quality of life for the residents?
Okay. I don't know that the town needs to encourage tourism. I think it's, I think it's actually a natural occurrence. It's happening, and we are becoming more of a tourist destination. So a lot of our revenue for local businesses is driven by tourism. But with that said, I think the town has more of a responsibility to help mitigate any of the issues that come about. Mr. Duraskey does mention enforcement. Enforcement is important. I know that currently the town is hiring four new police officers, so hopefully that helps. I believe the current administration has done a lot, but I know there's room for improvement. And this is, you know, my expertise. I'm in the tourism business, so I do understand the impacts. When we built our project here in Touchog, we took all of that into consideration with traffic and mitigating issues that could arise from the tourist operation. Traffic is definitely an issue. I think that we need to engage more with the state, because we have state roads that we, as a town, will not have control over. We need to engage with also the county. The county actually controls our, one of our major thoroughfares as well. So a lot of this interaction has to take place. A lot of these relationships have to take place. Working with local businesses is also a great idea, Mr. Duraskey's mentioning. Relationships have to be developed. The town cannot, I don't think the town should be penalizing businesses for being successful. I think we need to mitigate issues by developing good relationships with these businesses so that moving forward, the transition more into a tourist destination is easier for everyone and the community. And I believe that the jobs that are created are important.
Muting, muting, muting.
Thank you. So now, Ellen, we are going to switch. We're going to switch up the pairs. So Greg and Greg now are a pair, Greg Duraskey and Greg Williams. And the second pair is Brian and Anthony. So Ellen, over to you.
Muted, Ellen. Ellen, you're muted. Ellen, you're muted.
Okay. Sorry, here I am. So our first question will be for Greg Duraskey and Greg Williams. And that will be, how do you propose to address the legalization of marijuana production in South Old Town? Greg Duraskey?
Thank you. This is another very important question. And anyone that wants to learn more about my position on this, I, you know, I recommend that you look to the Suffolk Times letter to the editor that I wrote a few months ago addressing this. But just to briefly outline it, I have called for South Old Town to opt out of recreational and onsite consumption of cannabis. Opt out until we figure it out. After we put together a plan, consult the community and see if and how it could work here, then it can be opened up to a public referendum and let the voters decide. Early on, Supervisor Russell kind of, you know, went after me for arguing about this. And in the meantime, they have not done anything to try to figure it out for South Old Town. It's important for voters to know that our opportunity to opt out ends at the end of December. So we really need to make a decision on this. This is another one of those issues that we can't afford to wait. The future is here now. The future hangs in the balance at this election. You know, this is one of those issues, you know, going back to the last question of dealing with tourist issues in South Old Town. That's trying to change the cars on a tire as it's driving down the highway. We have the opportunity here to address this issue before it's facing our community, and we're not doing that. This is just another clear example of where we need more leadership in South Old Town and where we need to get ahead of the problems. So just to be clear, I call for opting out of recreational marijuana and cannabis consumption in South Old Town until we figure it out. Thank you.
The cannabis issue is a serious issue. I, again, with quality of life, I would urge the current board to opt out of cannabis legalization in South Old Town. There's many reasons. When you have places where, you know, a commercial establishment where patrons would gather and partake in that, you know, there's a risk of them then driving home. Very difficult to test for that. With alcohol, you have a breathalyzer. With cannabis, there is no testing method. The other thing that concerns me is the smell. You know, in recent months, I've been to New York City and Boston, and you walk down the sidewalk and the smell is inescapable. And, you know, as a father of younger children, you know, dad, what's that smell? And you have to explain what the smell is. And, you know, if a person wants to, with the new laws, you know, grow some for their own recreational use and partake in that in the privacy of their own home without affecting the other residents of the community, that would be their business. But as far as the town legalizing that for consumption in, you know, public beaches, public parks, anyplace near a school, I would be very much against the cannabis legalization. Thank you.
Our next pair is- Our next is Brian and Anthony. So Brian, go first. You're going to need to unmute. Go ahead.
Ellen, the question?
The question is, how do you propose to address the legalization of marijuana production in South Old Town?
So to be clear, it's the same question as before, or what? I know you've been rotating the questions.
Sorry. And I've lost track here.
This one's- Yeah.
Affordable housing, sorry. What would you do to support the development of more affordable housing in South Old Town?
I just want to give credence to the muter. I think you're the best muter of all time, and thank you for making this difficult process. You know, we, no matter what the issues are, we still have to smile and laugh. So thank you very much for your duty, and that's not easy to do that. Thank you. That's a good question, Ellen. Affordable housing has come up before. And, you know, just as to go back, when the cottages were constructed, there was a human cry that it was going to reduce property value. So to be clear, that has not happened, and probably the cottages is probably South Old Town's most successful affordable housing. But now what's the graduated growth? What do we do next? So now hopefully the folks who are established at the cottages can sell their house within a reasonable rate and move on to more of the American dream. But I'm not sure that's occurring. And we have the new housing in Vineyard View, which is rental housing. Now, I'm sorry, I want my cake and I want to eat it too. And for affordable housing, it should be a phased level of rental to go into ownership. And to go back to the question about young people, what's the point of being a young person? If you can't have equity in your house and you stay here and work hard all your life and then you still are a renter? That's not fair. So first, I would convene and strengthen our committees on housing. And we have woeful education in the public about housing. So in a way to diffuse the nimbyism that can occur and could be correct in some instances, you, the civics, have done a great job in educating our community. And as a town council, I have to take a page from your playbook and have education. We are woefully miseducated about what's available and what is possible. And we have to convene all our stakeholders. Thank you very much.
Anthony, unmute yourself, please.
Okay, thank you. Another great question. I think, I think this also ties into creating jobs. We can create affordable housing, but if nobody can afford to live here, not even an affordable house would make any sense to anyone. So I think it's important that we encourage, and I'll go back to agriculture, to keep some sort of local businesses thriving here. So to mitigate any obstacles, I think I would loosen restrictions so that businesses can thrive, most importantly. But getting to affordable housing, I think we should as a town, and I know South Old Town has looked into grants that are available, because most of- Because most importantly, when developers, and some of you may know that I've been a builder all my life, that developers are always looking for the most reasonable parcel with the least amount of restrictions. So I think as a town, we've got to step in, make it very appealing for the sites to be developed, number one. And number two, if the town can take advantage of grants that are available to help offset costs, I think that's very important. We can also look to developing housing or easing up restrictions in some of the buildings that already exist in town. Sometimes we may have apartment opportunities above businesses, but if we don't ease up some of the restrictions so that the owner of the property can rent, then we're not going to have that opportunity for rentals above business locations. So there are lots of things we can do. I think we have to be proactive. But most importantly, I think if we have a good workforce and we encourage local businesses in easing restrictions for them, we could have a future for our next generation. Thank you.
Our next question will be for Greg and Greg, and we're going to start with Greg Williams. So we're gonna spotlight for him. The question is, how would you strengthen the historic preservation program and their goal of preserving our historic districts and historic buildings?
It is important that we work with landowners and owners of historic buildings, both commercially and residentially. A lot of these buildings are unique to our town, and our town is rich with history. The within the town, we could look for tax incentives. You know, unfortunately, when you have a building of that nature, the upkeep on those buildings gets very expensive. Sometimes, you know, they're just not built to modern, efficient building codes, expensive to heat, you know, you gotta, all the ornate woodwork and the trim. It takes a lot of maintenance to keep those buildings looking beautiful. So the, to work within the town to promote a tax incentive on historic buildings within the town. And then to also, you know, if there are certain areas, I know, you know, Village Lane and Orient is very unique as to, most of the houses have been there for a very long time. To work with that community, to get input from the community, to see how they want that community to stay and, you know, the shape to remain. And, you know, it is a a difficult, as with all governance, you know, many times you have a family that's lived in a house for two or three generations. And if they do commit to a historic preservation and then all of a sudden, they, you know, there's more people in the household, you know, you would want to make sure to have some options for them to possibly add on to the house while keeping with the historic charm or nature of the house. And again, that's going to come from working with...
Muting, muting, muting.
I'm gonna need to unmute.
So we live in a historic community, and we're, we should all be grateful for that, and we should all work to preserve this historic nature of our community. I think one of the things that we need to do, again, is to work on a plan and then execute that plan together. And I know when speaking with people out on the campaign trail, there's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of, you know, lack of clarity with what it means to be in a historic district, what it means to be in a historic home. And I think we, as a town, have a responsibility to help educate the community about what these things mean. I know, you know, back in 2019, after many years, the Historic Preservation Commission was still working on finally getting together an information packet that went out to owners or potential buyers of these historic homes, just to explain and outline what they meant. I think we need to build on that initiative and really kind of work with them to preserve these historic resources. You know, looking at the comprehensive plan, it talks not only about preserving our open space, but it talks about preserving our cultural heritage. These homes are an important part of that cultural heritage. And I think to do that, information is important. I think tax breaks are definitely worth exploring here and can be utilized to help offset some of the investments that need to be made in these homes. And I think we can also, as a town, do a better job of celebrating these homes. You know, getting out there and, you know, coordinating a celebration of these so people can appreciate these historic resources and don't just necessarily see them as a cost. Thank you.
So our next pair will be Brian and Anthony. And Brian, your question is, what is your view of the best use for the old oyster factory at the end of Shipyard Lane? What uses would you propose that will respect the character of the neighborhood and would not create increased traffic to that narrow road that is not just designed to support it?
That is an awesomely specific question, and I'll do my best to answer an awesomely specific question. And then, you know, we've talked about housing in our town. Now, I'm not saying that that's the only use. I'm just saying that could be a use of it is affordable housing. And we like to say smart growth way, in an environmentally friendly way because it is close to the waterway. As somebody who has an environmental background, I helped install some of the first wastewater systems that went on Mary's Road in Manitok. So if we did do housing at that location, I would want it to be in a smart, clean way that had no detriment to the pristine environment that it's near. And then, you know, I've talked about it before, I'm smart enough to know that I don't know everything. So for me, not being from that community, I would want to convene meetings with stakeholders who are in that civic. So whichever civic is in that district, I would want to, I would want to meet with them and discuss what they think are the good ideas. And certainly I could bring good ideas to the table, but I just want to make sure that people know, especially the civic people, I don't have all the answers. But I want to listen. I want to listen to what you think as homeowners, as taxpayers. I think that, you know, over the course of how the leadership has gone over the years, that has dropped out in terms of the weight of how we make decisions. It's what the community members think. So whatever we do, we have to do it in a smart way. Whatever we do, it can't increase the taxes. It can't destroy the environment. It can't make heaven a hell. We have to do it in a smart growth way. Thank you.
Anthony, mute yourself.
There we go. Okay. First communities that I canvassed and met with was actually that community, and it was the first thing that came up as a concern, and what can we do with it? I know the town currently is exploring changing zoning there. I think what's important is if we do change zoning, it should be something that conforms to whatever is existing there. And obviously, there's a lot of residents there. My recommendation would be the, if we were to develop it for residential use, I think it should be the lowest density possible. That'll mitigate any issues with water quality because that's always a concern, especially so close to the water there. The, the issue of any other type of proposal, I don't think would be an option. I believe that residential development is needed. I don't know that affordable housing would be as welcome because I did speak with a few of the homeowners in the area, and that was not something they'd like to see there. But something that conforms with the existing, the existing residential homes that are there, I think would be the best opportunity. Working, Brian mentions working with developing more groups or a set of people that could put the opportunities out there, maybe some more public hearings to discuss options, I think would be extremely helpful so that the public can weigh in on it. Most importantly, I think with getting feedback from the community, I think that would be a step in the right direction there. Thank you.
Our next question will be for Greg and Greg. We'll start with Greg Williams and then Greg Duraskey. So if we can find Greg. I'll try to spotlight him. I keep losing Greg. Greg, do you want to unmute yourself?
I'm unmuted.
You're unmuted. Okay.
Go ahead with the question, it's fine.
Okay, just say something. I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time, but there you are. Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Okay, so the next question is about code enforcement. And specifically, there doesn't seem to be a consistent code enforcement going on. The noise code, the short-term rental code, and the code as relates to dark sky lighting seem to be rarely enforced. And so can the candidates please address this issue and tell us how they intend to improve code enforcement?
That is a issue in town. I frequently hear that, you know, with the many times the code enforcement follows the town work schedule Monday through Friday, eight to four. So if there is an issue at 6:00 PM at night, or you're trying to have a barbecue at seven o'clock at night, and you got a contractor next door running his saws or compressors, we should be looking towards having evening code enforcement, you know, part-time code enforcement. And the, you know, the other issue with that is to make sure that, you know, the code violations do get followed through. You know, as, in my experience as a trustee, there's a couple of times where, you know, I've seen a violation and it just, the violator just keeps, you know, kicking the can down the road, and, you know, next thing you know, it's 18 months and no action's been taken. I would look to expand the hours of code enforcement through, you know, more of a rotating schedule within the staffing in that department to make sure that they are available for complaints in the evening hours and weekends. And in addition, that there is more accountability and follow-through. And, you know, at the end of the day, the goal is compliance. You know, we don't want, you know, we don't want the noise. We don't want the light pollution. We just want compliance. So hopefully through, you know, a visit, a warning, some education, the residents will correct the issue at hand moving forward. Again, for the betterment of the community and to respect the quality of life of the community. But through, you know, expanded evening and weekend hours with the staffing in place, and again, better follow-through, I think that would be the solution for code enforcement issues.
So this is a very important question, and I think it highlights a specific problem and also a more general problem that need to be addressed. So the specific particular problem is uneven enforcement in South Old Town, and I can tell you about a personal story that illustrates this. So I had a supporter with my yard sign in their yard, and a Republican committee person knocked on their door and said, are you sure you want that sign there? It looks like your hedge may be a little too close to the road. We wouldn't want you to receive a violation for that. We want your family to be safe. So using code enforcement as a political weapon needs to stop. I am committed to stopping that on day one. Now, the general problem is improving general code enforcement in our town. And I think we can do that by making the process more transparent. We've seen other communities, and this would relate specifically to short-term rentals, assigning public short-term permit rental numbers or rental numbers to homes. And then when people list their homes online, they need to have the permit number. And then if there's any violations, it would be attached to that specific number that would be available someplace on a public database. I think we could also look at this, generally speaking, with code enforcement. We see other communities that when there are, you know, legitimate code complaints, and I'm not talking about just the initial call, but when a complaint is actually filed, it goes into a public database that is viewable to the public so the public can check on the status of these enforcement complaints. I think our community, we need tools to protect ourselves. We need tools to improve and protect our quality of life.
Muting, muting.
All right. Thank you. For the candidates, we're now going to switch to the town clerk and ask a couple of questions to the town clerk candidates. So we're going to find Dennis and Candace. Okay? So let me... Candace, you're gonna be there, and we're going to... And let me find Dennis. Sometimes this isn't easy. Okay, so let's have Dennis go first.
And the question?
The question is, the current system of assessing town records is cumbersome. It's difficult to find records in the online laser fish system without specialized knowledge. How do you propose to make the public records more transparent and accessible to all?
Yes, and so Laserfish, I think, is a very good system. I think one of our biggest opportunities here is to go out to the public and have more forums and more ways to educate the folks in town how to get on Laserfish. We do have people that work in the office, we need to reconfigure what they do, which is a part of it because the more time that they could be better serving the public and more time they can get on the phone and guide people through Laserfish, the better it is. I mean, one thing that I was looking at is the, you know, when people put in FOIL requests, a lot of times that information is on Laserfish where they could go right to it. So I think the biggest, our biggest opportunity is to educate the folks and be there on the phone to guide them through Laserfish and educate them through that process.
Candace?
Thank you so much. So I feel like there needs to be a little bit of an overhaul, or maybe not a little bit of an overhaul of the site. It would seem that the technology in the office, I want to say the last updates are major overhauls, were more than 15 years ago. Technology is constantly evolving, and that's something that the town needs to get a better handle on, keeping up with it. If the system, you know, we need to look at ways to introduce new technology and make sure that the information, the information is easily accessible to the town. If it's a system that is over 15 years old, there has to be a way to update it. There are grants available that we should be seeking to do these technology updates for our infrastructure. So that would be my approach. So that would be my approach.
Okay, Candace, you have another question, and you get the first and first chance to answer this one, okay? "You can pay property taxes and parking tickets online. Why not allow the payment of all other fees online? How would you streamline the process for obtaining and paying for town permits and that sort of thing?"
Thank you so much. That is, again, another overhaul. I think it falls under this overhaul that I speak of. The DMV, when you pay for your registration for your car, you get a temporary. I think there needs to be a more streamlined way to pay for these permits and documents. We could, I mean, if there's a money exchange happening, there is a town record of it. So maybe we look at the prior records and be proactive and maybe send this information out so that it shifts the responsibility to the members of the community. So if we, if you're, we're looking at the historical records and we know who is, who is applying for these permits year after year, we could send them those documents. And then again, it shifts the responsibility for the members of the community to return the paperwork in a timely fashion so that the members of the clerk's office could do the same. Thank you.
Candace?
So, yes, so the website navigation, I think, in general, needs to be looked at. I, I think going to the clerk's portal should be a little more outside the rest of the town's website, so you can go right to it. And for instance, there, we, we in a lot of the other towns use a application called BAS, Bass. They've been taken over by admins. So we have been communicating and saying, "These are some of the things that make it quirky, so we need it done easier." Because right now, even though you go on and you have a transaction online, we have somebody in the office that has to spend a lot of time backing that information up and reviewing it. So we're, we're communicating with them now to try to get that streamlined. Because the more streamlining we do, the more time our folks in the office can spend with the folks that come to the window or on the phone to help them through the process better.
All right. Thank you so much. Now we're going to switch to the candidates for Highway Superintendent. Let's see, Mr. Williams, we have to find him. Okay. Why don't you go first? We want to find Dan, who's going to go first.
Ellen, do you want me to pick up these questions and finish up with superintendent?
Why don't you do that?
Okay, so Dan, the first question for Highway is, what would be your first priorities once you assume office? Dan?
Thank you, Drienne. Great question. My, my first priority upon assuming office is getting the team back together. After speaking with members of the community, members of the department, there's a real lack of team and leadership in that department. That department needs a very strong leader with a proven track record to get things moving there again and rebuilding the team. Secondly, we would start tackling issues in a, in a methodical sort of fashion. Some of the issues I'm talking about are, you know, crumbling roadways, poor drainage, lack of maintenance on, on, you know, day-to-day items. And, you know, come up with a capital plan for, for purchasing new equipment or used equipment in some cases to modernize, modernize the town's fleet and allow the team to go out safely to do the jobs. Training is going to be a very important aspect of this. You know, as good as the team is, they're only as good as the training that they have. And that, that's something that's severely lacking there as well. So upon day one, team building is going to be the number one thing, coming from a good, strong leader with a proven background of this. And I gather that from my time working with, you know, and managing a crew of upwards of 50 to 60 employees on, you know, 15 to 20 job sites daily with 80 pieces of rolling stock and equipment. Thank you.
I need to unmute.
The question?
Well, I'll repeat the question. So Donald, the question is, what would be your first priorities once you assume office?
Since I know most of the fellows and the personnel at highways would be, have a meeting with them and explain to them that it's going to be run in a different manner, that I'm going to bring a new love to highway and that we're all going to work together as a team to move forward. There is a lack of leadership there. I will bring a new love to that leadership spot. I will show them that I'm there every day, sometimes before them and staying after them, and to show them that we will all move forward together, to treat people fairly, honestly, and have respect for everybody. After that, it would move to the equipment. We're now purchasing, or we might be purchasing a vacuum truck for $430,000. And my question was, where are we going to store it? And nobody had an answer. So I don't think it's smart to spend $430,000, $430,000 for a piece of equipment and not have a garage to put it in. A lot of our equipment sits outside when it's not being used, and that's the worst thing you can do for equipment. Yeah, it rusts out, or you spend more time trying to get it started when it's not being used. So little by little, we would need some storage buildings to keep our equipment in, get the maintenance program going back in order, and have respect for everybody there. And also, I would spend more time on the road dealing with homeowners, asking them, "What's the problems in their area?" And address those problems in a timely and effective way. Thank you.
Right. Okay, so Donald, you're going to be first for this question. "What recommendations would you make to the town board for dealing with traffic congestion to ensure the safe and convenient movement of motor traffic, as well as for pedestrians and cyclists?" So again, what recommendations would you make to the town board for dealing with traffic congestions? Congestion to ensure safe and convenient movement of motor traffic, as well as consideration of pedestrians and cyclists?
Something like that. On certain roads, you would probably need a traffic study, and you would have to talk to the people in that area and see what their feelings are. Some streets do have sidewalks, which is great. Some don't, and there are people that jog along and take bicycles on them, and it does cause a problem. I live in Ketchikan, and my girls used to jog down to Nassau Point. I was always nervous on that road because some of the cars were going faster. You could try to slow the cars down by putting the police speed signs out. It says how fast you're going, like in front of the schools. I know when I always go to, you know, come along Main Road to Matituck, and I see 20 miles an hour, and, you know, I hate to tell you, I'm doing 40, you know, I put on the brake to make sure I'm under, you know, or at least just being at that 20. So you could put them in, move around. I think the police department has one or two of them now. That will slow down the speed of traffic, the amount of traffic. I don't know if that's Highway question, that's more of a town board question, or to do a traffic study. Some spots could get turn-in lanes, you know, if there's enough room. A lot of our roads don't have room for that. Some have bicycle paths, you know, not a path on the side of the road, a little bicycle lane. But it gets tricky because we have so many bicycle clubs coming out. Twenty or 30 people in the club, and the first guy has a whistle, and, you know, he's coming to an intersection, he blows the whistle, and, well, the car's supposed to stop. And so it's, it's not going to be easy. And you would have to talk to all the little hamlets and what they need. Thank you very much.
This is a, this is a great question, and I, I agree with Don in the fact that a traffic study would need to be done. The only thing that I would like to say is that the traffic studies have been done, and they're publishing the comprehensive plan. Unfortunately, the last traffic study was done in 2016, but this is a good starting point. And my comments to the town board would be going back to what Greg was saying earlier. Greg Deraske, my running mate, was saying earlier, "We need an implementation committee to implement the comprehensive plan." The talks of traffic have been going on since this plan has been being developed, and nothing has been done about it. It's time for the talking to stop and the action to start, okay? There's 28 miles of sidewalk in South Old. The comprehensive plan also calls out for the expansion of this in very specific detail as to where it should be done. We need to revisit these ideas, make sure that they're still pertinent to the community, what the community needs are. Obviously, everything has changed very drastically in the last five years, but the initial roadmap has been set out for us, and it's our time now to do something about it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So we're at 10:22. I think that we are really within two minutes of what we thought we would be. So now we're going to start with closing comments, and we're going to start with the Republican team first. So Anthony, why don't you lead off, followed by Greg, Dennis, and then Donald, and then over to the Democrats?
I'm unmuted already. So thank you once again for giving us this opportunity. I feel like I've had tremendous experience with developing extremely successful businesses my entire life. I started with a construction company in 1989, which still is in existence. I feel like I've developed the people skills, the fiscal responsibility to manage budgets, to manage people. More importantly, I've had thousands probably by now of employees and have worked well with most of them and have developed these successful businesses because of the teams that I've developed. So what I'd like to say to our community is that I'm ready, I'm ready at this point in my life. I probably was not ready five years ago or even a year ago, and I'm not sure I would be ready in five years from now, but I am ready now to serve the community. I'd like to bring my skill sets to everyone. And I'm, I'm hopeful that I will be received and with open arms here for our community. And I did have a few more other notes. I think that also my experience with the Ag Advisory the last several years has given me an insight to our local government. I do believe that there's room for improvement, most importantly. I feel like I'll be a new face and with new ideas to help implement and direct some goals moving forward. The implementation was mentioned about our comprehensive plan. I believe that the plan is there, and I believe the tool is there so that our various departments can access it. And I'm there to help implement that as well.
Muting, muting.
I'm up?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Inclusion, there's more to the town than the scenic vistas, the beautiful waterways that we have. There's a community, and it's important to work with the community, to be involved in the community, to lead by example, and listen. So I look forward to continue to work for the community, as I have done for many years in my business and in my public service. The it's just, it's a great town to live in, and I'm thankful to be here. And I look forward to serving the community moving forward, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 2nd. Thank you.
The future of our community hangs in the balance. It's on the ballot this coming November 2nd. I think the choice is clear between those who want to gain and maintain power and those seeking to serve our community, those seeking to preserve a status quo that's not working for the people of our community, and those seeking to lead South Old forward. I'm Greg Deraske, and I'm running for town council to serve and to strengthen our community and to preserve our way of life. I'm ready to do the hard work that's necessary to give our community a fighting chance. The big money is here, the big development is coming. This election before us, I believe, is our final opportunity to put ourselves in the opportunity to give the people of our community the freedom, the freedom to choose a future that works for us all. I think the author Wendell Berry put it best when he wrote that "to cherish what remains of the earth and foster its renewal is our only, it is our only legitimate hope of survival." This is just as true in South Old Town as it is of the earth. And it's just as true of the relationships and connections that sustain us as it is of this unique place where we are all so fortunate to live. We need leaders who can put us in the position to make our community proud and to give us the opportunity to preserve this gift. Please vote to elect me your next South Old Town Councilman. I won't let you down. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you once again to Drienne and Ellen and the muter-in-chief Karen. It just has been a beautiful experience for me. I'm so glad that the Democratic side has taken every opportunity to talk to our fine folks in South Old, and we're off today to even talk to more folks. And I'm not sure that's what's occurring on the other side. As somebody that's grown up in Matituck and lived in South Old his whole life, I want you to know I'm going to fight like hell to preserve what's good and make some positive changes. I'm not a divider. I'm not somebody that will use my elected authority to abuse and destroy people. I want to use my elected authority to build up and protect all South Olders, young and old. And I'm so glad that the questions that we were asked and the opportunity to, to respond in a cogent and forthright way. And I hope through my actions as a community member, as the most experienced public servant, you can see my heart in my public service. Folks who are concerned about taxes, I have some of the most experienced budgetary oversight, and that's something that's going to be a big part of whoever is elected, and I hope that you elect me as your next town councilperson. I'm a proud recipient of the Helen Wright Prince Award for my community service. I'm a proud member of the South Old Rotary, and I'm a proud worker at the South Old, I'm at the, excuse me, the Greenport Library, Floyd Memorial Library, and that has really helped me focus my public service, listening and caring for our community on all levels. And that's what I would do as a South Old Town Councilperson. This could be an historic election. I could be the first African-American town councilperson. And that's long overdue. That's in my family to break barriers, and I want to break barriers for all South Olders. Thank you for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you. Now Dennis and Candace?
Sure, thank you. Eddie, when you are.
Close in comments.
Yes.
Thought I went first, so I didn't know if Dennis was going to go first this time.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you again to the Civic Association for putting this, this beautiful event together. Zoom is a little difficult as we are, this whole slate here, we love to connect with people, so I appreciate your time. South Old Town truly deserves a fresh perspective. I am committed to bringing transparency, accountability, and excellence to our town government. Making space for leadership that truly represents the members of this community is vital to our future. I know that I have the right combination of lived experience, values, and qualifications to best serve as your town clerk. Values from my Christian upbringing such as servant leadership. We are here as public servants. We are here to serve our community, and this is something that I will bring with me to town hall. I humbly ask for your vote on November 2nd, or early voting, next Saturday starts, to lead South Old forward. Thank you so much.
Dennis?
Hi. All right, so All right, so thank you very much for having this. It was very well done. Just to say, I've worked with the town for quite a few years. I've been with a lot of other organizations. I've been on the Board of CAST. I've been the past president of CAST. With my office, we've gotten a ton of great projects done around town, and that's thankful for all the people in town. That's so many people have come forward to assist and help, and I'm blessed to be in this town also. My greatest joy, and it takes day and night to get this joy done, is to help people that come forward and need assistance in the town. And my phone is ringing off the hook all the time. It's seven days a week. It takes a lot of energy, and I'm grateful to be there to help them. And I would like to bring that opportunity and what I have to bring forward to the clerk's office to be able to help with my management experience even more folks. So if you, I'm just looking for everybody's support coming up, and God bless you all, and thank you.
Okay, great. So now Donald, followed by Dan.
Hello?
Good.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. I will put in the time needed to make all the taxpayers of South Old Town proud of Highway. I will start a program that takes care of all the roads, all the drains, cuts the grass and the trees on the side of the road, clouds in winter. It keeps jumping back. Oh, there it goes. Did you hear the first things I was saying or no?
No, we heard you.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. And update all the equipment, I'm sorry, update all the equipment so that everybody's proud. Now, this is Donald Grim as a person from his heart, and this is what my mom and dad taught me and I push down to my kids. If you can't say anything nice about anybody, don't say anything at all. Always try to be the better person. Never ask anybody to do something you wouldn't do yourself. Never be a bully, nor let anybody bully you. And that's who I am from my heart as a person. So please vote for me, Donald Grim, and thank you very much.
Thank you to all the organizers of this event. It's been a really great time getting to hear what really matters to this community in addition to some of the other events that we've had in the community, and this is just built upon that. I understand the need for leadership from my time working with and managing teams of hazmat technicians, laborers, equipment operators, and professional drivers. And to serve our community, I bring my engineering background and this hands-on expertise in environmental response, industrial maintenance, and utility and infrastructure projects. I will deliver fiscal responsibility from my oversight of a current $10-plus million annual operating budget. My experience in this budgeting and utilization will lend themselves in my ability to plan the work and work the plan for maintenance and improvements to our roads. As a mechanical engineer and emergency response professional, I prepare in advance, vet out solutions to the unknown, adapt to change, and communicate clearly. South Old Town deserves an efficient, responsive, and transparent department to preemptively maintain and ensure the safety of the infrastructure of the town. As superintendent of highways, I will be proactive with maintenance and improvements and communication to ensure the safety of our town road infrastructure. I just want to leave everybody with a quote from Albert Einstein here today. I think it's very telling of our two groups here. "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking that we use to create them." Please think about this on November 2nd as you cast your vote, and I respectfully request you vote for me as superintendent of highways. Thank you.
Great, well, so this is just Drianne and Ellen. I think we'll make a closing comment too. We just want to thank you so much for being here today. All of the candidates sharing your views, your plans, your thoughts, your concerns. It's been wonderful, and we thank you for being available on Zoom and taking the time on a Saturday morning. I know you have many people to meet and places to go. Again, on behalf of the Orient Association and East Marion Community Association, we thank you all. We'll be posting this recording on our websites. We'll be able to listen again and follow up with you as well. Ellen, do you have any closing words?
My only closing words are to thank everyone for participating and for putting up with our little technical glitches, but mostly we thank you for stepping up to run for office and to offer yourselves for service to the town of South Old, which is something we really support and which we really need. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See everybody on the road.
Thank you.